Make sure if you join the Zoom that you mute your speaker and microphone. They can hear us through these microphones, but if you have your ending on your computer active, we'll get that feedback thing. Mute your speaker. Yeah, I mean, you don't have to join Zoom. No, look, we're live on YouTube. Awesome. Ready there, Mr. TJ?
So this is all about the master plan?
Yes.
For discussion eight, two, and then for nine, four.
Okay.
Hello, Mr. Speaker. How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Ready for spring break?
Yes, ma'am.
Nice. All the kids are too.
Yes, they are.
Gee, I had this, I said they wouldn't come in tomorrow. I said, what?
I heard a lot of kids say they were not coming.
My daughter said, if there's a delay, there's no school. She's like, so I hope there's a delay.
Are we ready?
Because it doesn't make sense. Yeah. So she's like, I'm hoping for a delay.
Yeah.
I was like, well, I'm hoping that you get good school.
All right, I'm gonna call this meeting to order at six thirty PM on March sixteenth, twenty twenty-two. So stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I really miss not having students in the audience, as one of them can leave, but. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a roll call, please, sir?
Ms. Combs?
Present.
Mr. Lippert, aye. Mr. Ricks, absent, by notice. And that'll be the last time I'll say it for tonight.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Swayze?
Aye, here.
Yeah, Mr. Underwood?
Here. Brings us to modification approval agenda. I'd like to make a motion to add action on nine dot five education workforce program grant assurances. Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other motions to modify the agenda? Call for the vote, please, sir.
Ms. Combs?
Aye.
Mr. Lippert, aye. Mr. Swayze?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Aye. Brings us to open forum. Still no one signed up for open forum? Thank you. All right, it brings us to five dot O consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve a consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Lippert. Call for the vote, please, sir.
Ms. Combs?
Aye.
Mr. Lippert, aye. Mr. Swayze?
Aye.
Mr. Underwood?
Aye. Motion carries consent agenda is approved. That brings us to board comments. Uh, Mr. Swayze, sir.
I just would like to make sure everybody knows that our staff in the high school and middle school is doing an outstanding job. Our principal and our AD or whatever you want to call Mr. Jordal, I think they're doing a fantastic job. I've caught them in the hall many, many times watching the students, talking to the students. And I want to make sure everybody knows that they are, they're on the ball up there and I appreciate it. All of them, teachers included.
That is, sir?
That's it.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Lippert, sir.
I'll second that, but I also went down to Curry Heights. Just amazing staff there as well. The kids are marvelous and either school I go to, I have just had such a great time with the kids. I like to eat lunch with them. I had a good time. The staff, fantastic. It's an absolute pleasure to represent and talk to.
Thank you. Mrs. Combs?
Um, I just want to say thank you for all the support with the sports this year. Our boys, I want to, I know that that counseling school was a big, it weighed heavy on a lot of people. The decision wasn't made lightly. Um, I know the boys and the team really appreciated it. I've heard a lot of staff appreciated it as well, so that way they could go. We hadn't been to regionals in a very long time, and so I want to say from last year's attendance to sports to this year's, the fans have definitely shown up. To regular games, to parent night, to the regional game. We had a very good turnout. I feel like we're starting to create that community. I think it's bigger than sports. It's about creating that community together. And so it was nice to see. I just want to say thank you to everyone's understanding for that decision and supporting it. I just want to say thank you to all the staff for showing up every day, showing up for our kids, showing up for, and this is from the bus drivers, to the maintenance, to the custodians, to every teacher and administration. Thank you for showing up. It's hard these days to be a teacher, so I just appreciate everything that you guys do. And to the parents, once again, as always, thank you for entrusting us with your, with your children to educate them and trust us with them. So I just want to say I hope everyone has a great march. We're starting to wrap up. Spring break is next week. I think it's needed for all the students as well as the staff. I hope everyone can have a little rejuvenation and come back and let's hit this last quarter of the year hard. And I can't believe we're already here, three quarters of the way through. So I just want to say, let's make the last of it a great year. Thanks again.
Randy?
Sir?
One more thing. I want to make sure everybody knows the parents that showed up at the basketball game, the boys really appreciated the coaching, because a lot of them did not have kids. They were just members of the community. One of them was Pat, her husband. I just say them because they've been supporting the sports all year long. But a lot of parents that did not have kids, we had a big turnout from Edison supporting us too. Want to make sure everybody knows that.
It was great to see.
Yes.
So, um, anything else?
Thank you, Randy.
Um, no, that's it.
Okay, all right. So budget preparation is upon us. And I know I've said this before, but I want to say it again. I don't know how much more emphatic I can be. I, I think last year I even raised my voice when I said this. Um, teachers, please ask for what you need. Um, you know, you see these posts on Facebook by the teachers and like, you know, I spend so much of my personal money buying supplies for the classroom. Don't. I think we can afford it. Um, I had a conversation with the business manager last week. She agrees. Please, ask for what you need. Another, another point of emphasis on this is, you know, we, we talk about it quite a bit. How, you know, a fair number of the families in our district live at or below the poverty line. And then we have this list of everything that we're expecting every student to bring in, paper towels and crayons and pencils. Don't do that. Ask for it. I think we can afford it. I mean, we put, we plan to put six figures into the fund balance this year. I can't imagine that two hundred packs of crayons is gonna break us. Um, you know, I know we don't pay teachers a lot, so I don't want them to spend their money on that. We don't want to ask the families to provide that stuff. Please, teachers, staff, everyone, ask for what you need. Now, I will caveat that and say at the end of the day, I can't guarantee anything. We have to rack and stack, and there may be some things that fall off the boat, but that shouldn't stop you from asking. All right, please. I say it every year. I'm not joking. I really want you to do it. Um, probably had a whole bunch of other things, but I got wrapped up in that. All right, Mr. Superintendent, sir.
Uh, yes. So I want to thank Ms. Pat for her help with the preschool grant. Uh, preschool really appreciates that and the reporting. She's really helping out. Ms. Jody wanted me to take an extra time to publicly thank her. Uh, she also wanted to tell everybody preschool is starting early registration in April, so keep your eyes open for that. Uh, PHE had great fun with Dr. Seuss Day and decorating doors. Uh, parent-teacher conferences are taking place this week, in fact, even today. And I want to say that PHE has an awesome staff as well. As usual, the board members are stealing my thunder on several things here. Stuko is working on holiday celebrations and, and I know Ms. Cheeseman really wants to thank her staff. She said they were, they're absolutely incredible and awesome this year. Uh, the junior, senior high school wanted me to say the same thing to the parents, to the community. A huge commendation for the support of the basketball team, the bus send-off, the number of people at the playoffs game and at the brush game at regionals. Uh, they also wanted to say that middle school had their knowledge bowl for their matchwhips. Uh, take that. Mr. Koopman wanted me to relay that the, uh, the teacher conferences that are going on right now were changed after conversations with parents last fall. Uh, they encouraged him to be more flexible and win those parent-teacher conferences took place. And that's why they are doing a family-focused night tomorrow night, so that they can, parents can show up in person. They can, they can still Zoom if they want that. They can schedule what, all of that is on the table. Uh, we realize that Friday is the day before spring break for everybody, and maybe parents would rather not take Friday or Friday evening to come in and do, do that. So they're trying to be very flexible with that. Uh, career start with Pike's Peak Community College registration is taking place right now for next year. Uh, for students that want to sign up for any type of CTE course. Um, in addition, we are doing concurrent enrollment for students, so we really encourage students that want to take either of those to get with their counselor. Uh, also wanted to say middle school wrestling and high school track has started. Operations would like to say those football field lights are going in, in the next month. End of April. Middle school wrestling has started and finished.
They had their first and last match in the same day.
They got third in the district, out of five schools, so we're, we're actually kind of excited that, that we, we're starting to build a wrestling program here. I'm excited to see it as well. Uh, a huge thanks from me goes out to our bus drivers and our operations staff for taking care of our students. A huge shout out to our food service teams for the nutritious food being provided as well. And I want to thank the park board and the community members that met with me at the Firehouse Pancake Breakfast on Sunday. I met with several former board members to discuss our vision for the district and our vision for the park. Um, I'm encouraging everyone to please attend that pancake breakfast. We will have an opportunity to talk with an administrator each and every month. Uh, as far as the budget goes, my philosophy is it's our job to figure out a way to say yes. In the central office and the support staff, our job is to serve teachers and, and the schools so that they can serve our students and take care of them. So whatever you need, please, again, I reiterate, don't hesitate to ask. And last, have a fun and safe spring break. And that's all I have.
Well, and if the weather does turn nasty, be safe out there tomorrow, people.
Yes.
Any alibis, sir? All right. Uh, that brings us to seven dot O deck report to the board. Mrs. Coggan. Make sure that microphone's on and check it. Quick alibi.
Can I say a quick alibi? I would like to say thank you to Ms. Underwood for this beautiful, brand-new podium that she built herself. And Ms. Coggins, you get to be the first person to use it.
Without Randy's help.
Without you.
No, no, no. Okay, that was, that was a juxtaposed statement. Lori built it without my help. She doesn't need my help to use it.
It does look like it's on.
Oh, awesome.
Uh, so a quick summary of the DAC report. Uh, we talked through SCAP mostly about how can we send multiple messages, make sure that we get the best participation as possible. Um, especially so that we can know what's going on in the district, what people want to see out of the district. Um, ICAP follow-up, uh, we're checking with Ms. Nina, see if she needs anything further from us or how we can help her facilitate that. Uh, we will be sending out a survey to the parents and the students, mostly about communication. What are their concerns? What are they wanting to see? What are they wanting more of? What are they wanting less of? Um, really so that we can make sure that communication part is hit well. Uh, we discussed in May doing a virtual town hall of some sort to introduce the Parent Square app to the community. This is so the summer gets really busy. We don't want to burden families with doing that this summer, but we feel like suddenly jumping it upon them in August isn't going to be the best thing either. So hopefully we can have Mr. Cooper's help with that, just because he has experience. I volunteered already to help facilitate that and kind of be the ringleader of the fiasco, but.
Thank you.
Uh, possibly movie night was put on hold for now, just because there's multiple things going on before the end of the school year. I talked about maybe doing that this summer or just putting off until next fall. But being there was one at the middle, the elementary school, we didn't want to leave out the high school, middle school students. Um, discuss possibly using the tour to Hanover or the Hanover Days as a possible community outreach opportunity, just to maybe bring more awareness about DAC and the school board and getting more participation out of the community and to our school district. Uh, PHE, we talked about, guys talked about a lot of this already, uh, parent-teacher conferences, Dr. Seuss Week at both schools were awesome. Something to keep note of is there is a silent auction coming up for the PTA over at PHE, uh, as well as a joint effort between the PTA and PTSA for cookbook. So anybody listening in future, make sure you're keeping those favorite recipes on hand so that we can all put together this awesome Hanover cookbook.
Is auction gonna be online like it was?
It is gonna be online. We figured that's gonna be the easiest way to meet, reach the most people. Uh, junior high, high school, uh, like we said already, the support from the basketball, the basketball team was absolutely incredible. Middle school wrestling, it sounds like, went really well. Uh, middle school Mashwich is coming up. And the last thing that I've got on my list is we are still recruiting. I would love to have another parent co-chair to help me out. Um, so we're looking at opportunities to help recruit as well. So if you're interested, please join DAC.
Thank you.
And to get ahold of Ms. Coggan, it's really hard. Okay, dac@hanoverhornets.org.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to, uh, thank you very much, by the way, ma'am. Um, brings us to date dot one, February special policy update. So as you know, every once in a while, Casby does some special policy updates. Um, this time around, they did four policies, and on one of them, they only changed a note. So we didn't bring that one forward. We'll put that in the regular review cycle. Um, AC was just the, um, we had to assign a, a person by name in, in the policy. Um, and then DJB was some really minor. Um, it's uh, federal procurement is what DJB is, and that was just, um, really loosening of the restrictions. You know, from, from shall, should, or stuff like that. And the biggest one is J I C D E. They really enhanced that one quite a bit. Expanded the definition of some things and then and then they reorganized basically. That's, that's one of the most red lines. Very few substantive changes on outside of the definition section. See, that's the thing, the way the changes come in. They had bullying defined before, but it was bullying and something else, and it's huge. So, um, unless there's any objections, we'll move those three policies forward next month for second read and approval. Any questions on those policies? Okay. Brings us to eight dot two, master plan. Sir, you are up.
All right. Well, thank you for your time tonight and having us back again. Um, again, Carl Herschel, the Conergy, and so just two things to, to cover tonight. And I've got the two speakers lined up. They'll be talking virtually, but just a first, a quick update on the best grant. We got that submitted, as you all know, February fourth. Uh, we're in the middle of the kind of back and forth questions and clarifications process, so we've got another few responses due on Monday. And so we are working to support Superintendent Cooper on getting the responses, main and clarifications, and very good sign from my view. You know, minor certifications and no, um, showstoppers that I can see, but again, not over till the board hears it. So this, from this point forward, it goes, after we submit, then our application will get submitted to the board and they'll start their review. And then on schedule, uh, there's hearings in May, um, and then the process continues. So in the meantime, uh, as we talked before, uh, it is, it is time now to move on and, and help get your planning going for what might be phase two. The next steps in that planning, uh, is to start with the demographic plan and the master plan, as we talked about. For Superintendent Cooper's request, I provided the board with a summary, a budget summary and a, a very brief scope summary of both the master, the demographic plan and the master plan. And tonight, um, each of the providers, we've got Western Demographics and Shannon Bigum, uh, is gonna head up the demographic study. And then, um, Jessica Blanford from MOA Architects is heading up the master planning. Two components that, that fit together and integrate together closely to provide the needs that we've identified for the district. And I do need to just make a comment. I, back in September, provided some guidance on what I felt was budgetary range for this next step. And coming back a little higher than that, but it's, it's needed. I was underestimating, it's kind of saying, well, we could really kind of skimp on this or skimp on that. But after understanding more about the district and talking to the two experts you're gonna speak with tonight, the, the recommendation we're coming back with is, I think, valuable and will inevitably get the district, uh, to the goals that you're looking for to help you plan for the future. So, um, unless there's further questions on that.
I have one major question, sir.
Yes.
Considering the, the schedule of things, um, is there any reasonable way? You, do you believe for us to defer the initiation of this process until after we determine whether or not we were awarded the best grant? And still be ready with appropriate language if there's a valid question in November?
So in my opinion, the answer to that is unfortunately no, because of the, the work and the data that you're going to need in order to line up for the bond campaign. Should you still be targeting this November for the bond campaign? That's sort of the critical path.
Well, that's what's on the agenda for later on in the meeting.
So I think to start that, but the other point there, and I think both of our, our experts tonight can tell you that, uh, the process that they're starting and continuing with is valuable information that this district sooner or later is gonna need anyway. So, um, we have been asked if, to make sure it's okay to defer any kind of compensation for this till after July, which worked out. And so, you know, that can get it to your next year's budget without impacting, uh, pre-July.
News. That's news.
Okay.
We knew we asked the question, we knew the answer was coming, we just hadn't heard it yet.
We worked it out. So again, between our trade partners and us and, and we're gonna take care of that and, and assist in that way if that's still necessary, right? So, uh, we're willing to make, uh, you know, that, that stretch for you all and, um, yeah, we want to, we want to help them. So with, again, any other questions, I will, I think at this point, I've asked, um, both, uh, Shannon Bigum from Western Demographics and Jessica Blanford to each provide a fifteen-minute sort of summary, high-level summary of their components. So we'll start with the demographic plan, and if, uh, Shannon is connected up. Shannon, can you hear us?
I can hear everyone. I, I don't have video of myself and I'm wearing a tie. Um, can you hear me though?
Shannon is a world-renowned and a Colorado famous demographer, and so, uh, again, Shannon, go ahead and, I think, we, yeah, fifteen-minute overview and then we want to get the board a chance to ask questions, and then we'll move on to the master.
Well, thank you, Carl. Well, good evening, everybody. It's a privilege to be here. Um, my name is Shannon Bingham. I own Western Demographics. I am kind of the grand old man of Colorado school planning. I've been around for almost forty years now. Um, I was the first planning director of Academy Twenty, and then I was the planning director of Boulder Valley. And then I worked for the Department of Education for a while and went into private practice. And since then, I've worked for about two hundred different school districts, mostly in Colorado. Um, I live in Lyons, um, uh, east of Longmont and, um, work all over the state and work all over the western US in Alaska and Washington State and Oregon and elsewhere. Mostly do the sort of thing that you're looking at tonight, assisting districts with capital facility needs. And then I do a lot of some of the most difficult things that school districts ever do, such as splitting in half, um, changing boundaries. Um, a variety of things like that, closing schools, activating new schools, packaging bond elections. So this is kind of my forte. Um, it's kind of an odd thing for most people. It's exactly what I was trained to do and I've never done anything else. So, um, really enjoy this sort of work. I work for a lot of small districts all over the west. And, um, for housing affordability reasons, a lot of, of the smaller districts in the state are really beginning to see some unprecedented growth, because those are places where we have a lot of affordable land. And so development pressure is really steering toward the small district in Colorado and elsewhere in the west. So very recently, I've been engaged with Wiggins, Brush, Kingsburg, Lock Buoy, Bennett, Strasburg, Highlands Alt, which includes Alt, Pierce and Nun, Johnstown, Milliken School District, Windsor, Monument, Salida. I've also worked recently for Gunnison, Lamar, Granada, Montrose, Eds, Craig, Hayden. So a lot of these smaller districts are starting to see a lot of growth pressure. So what I've shown you is a proposal to do, um, a demographic study, ask a bunch of hard questions of some of the developers and municipal leaders that are planning growth on the northern edge of the Hanover School District and trying to figure out what our future would hold, so that you make good decisions now that anticipate what your future might hold. So my process is very organic. I tend to interview people. So as part of my process, I would make sure that I had a sit-down with every one of these folks that have some sort of a plan to develop new housing in Hanover School District, ask them what they're gonna do, when are they going to do it, what's the likelihood of achieving their plan? And to what extent might it produce children? And so I think that's really important, even though we are a one-round school district at the moment with, um, you know, one class at each grade level. At a certain point, we're going to become a two-round school district and then a three-round school district. And right now, we're operating in, in our, our two main buildings, but at a certain point, we'll be adding a third. It seems fairly obvious to me that that third building would be on the northern edge of the school district, approximate to the growth that Fountain and possibly Colorado Springs would, uh, support. And that we would need to, at some point, make a decision whether we bus children across the district to the school and schools in the heart of the district, or do we establish a separate facility? And then the big question becomes, when does that happen? To a certain extent, we would be serving children in our existing facilities until we have enough children to justify another building. From an efficiency standpoint, we would need to think about that. And if the timing of that is significantly beyond the scope of what you want to do with the best grant, then we could acknowledge that that is significantly in the future. If it's not significantly in the future, what we do now has some, is somewhat affected by what could happen to us in the future with that, um, additional growth. So my proposal here includes kind of the standard best grant exploration that the Colorado Department of Education is really insisting that every best grant application have all these pieces and parts. And they know exactly. And they know exactly what they're looking for. I've done 10 or 12 of these, they're used to my stuff, it's what they see most of the time. And we pretty much have to look at birth rates, growth in the community, job growth, if, if, if any. Are we a bedroom community? Will that persist? What's our housing growth situation? What's our, you know, is our birth rate increasing or declining? Are we growing overall? You know, those sorts of things. So in general, I'm proposing that we do this very thorough exploration of how growth is going to affect the district within a reasonable period of time, probably 10 years. And really go far to try to fit, to get a really good handle on that. And if we don't need to be addressing that, and we're mostly looking at a school condition best grant, then knowing that has an incredible amount of value. So the, the heart of my proposal there are the fundamentals of that best grant proposal. And as you're looking at Carl's memo there, you're seeing that I would develop an eight year forecast that would probably be more like 10. We would develop utilization rates for our existing facilities, which best is looking for. Now regarding portable classrooms, I am systematically helping most of the districts in the state get out of portable classrooms. So we just got rid of half of the ones that we're using in Greeley. And we're getting rid of another 12 or 14 next fall through some boundary changes. So I, I really would encourage you to, as you consider what you can afford, to explore the idea of trying to have permanent space instead of portable classrooms as you go forward for several reasons that I don't need to get into tonight. So as part of my process, I would develop a presentation that you could use to raise awareness in your community of what your needs are, to build support for the best grant application and process. And then I would assist Carl and the rest of the team in putting everything together. I have a couple of optional items there. One would be facilitating a capital committee. And I don't know whether that's consistent with the goals of the district or whether that would just include the board and a couple of key administrators and accountability folks. But for the most part, you're going to get a bunch of data from your architect team that says, well, we could go down this road or that road. And the question becomes, what do we do? And I've become pretty valuable to a lot of smaller districts in figuring out a way to, through considering options, doing cost benefit, pro con, a various scenarios, sometimes what's called a SWAT process, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, threats. Go through that and figure out what is the best course, course of action, given the various future potentials. I do a lot of internal polling. I do a lot of Survey Monkey based polling where you can poll yourself confidentially, look at the results without tipping your hand, and then make a decision based on how you feel about a certain course of action as a group, and then become unified behind a certain strategy. So that's one service that I've helped with. Sometimes that's not necessary. Sometimes you can just put a pizza and some soda in the middle of a table and set aside an hour and everybody can kind of figure that out on their own. But I did want to op, offer an option for you to use me as a facilitator to help you get through that process. Usually I try to do that in four or five two hour meetings, depending upon the complexity of what's needed. Obviously you'll need to get up to speed on some building condition issues that you have. So we would need to have adequate time to do that if we did choose that route. The other option is I do a lot of community survey work. We just did one a couple of years ago in Douglas County where we had 18,000 participants. And in that survey, we were asking what was important to people? Did they want to continue to build new buildings? Or were they more interested in boundary changes and using what they had? How did they feel about portable classrooms? How did they feel about K eights? How did they feel about sixth grade in their middle schools? So via those kinds of things, we can collect a lot of community feeling about what is the most important? How important is efficiency? How do you feel about portable classrooms? And so doing those sorts of things could really help you understand the comfort to which your community would have in funding bond improvements that would eliminate your portable classroom needs. And again, portables are, are really for air quality and security reasons becoming less prevalent in public schools and a lot of districts are stepping away from them. So if you wanted to do a little community survey to help you figure out what you would want to have in a bond package, that little option too there would, would cover us being able to do that. I would be depending upon the district to give the email lists and phone numbers and, and stuff to that effect. So anyway, that's the service that I could offer. Again, I've done this over and over and over again for 40 years. I'm tactful. I don't think I've ever thoroughly stuck my foot in my mouth. But there's always a first time, but I think that I could be of service to your district and would certainly be delighted to help you with your needs. So with that, I'll pause and respond to any questions that you might have.
I, I personally don't, don't have any questions.
With the survey, just to be clear, if that option two was taken, you would be vetting different language for the, the potential November campaign, correct?
Yes, I would write the survey for you and we would be figuring out what your community priorities are. What do people believe they would support? And beyond that, if those items were in a bond package on a ballot, would they vote for it? And so that would be kind of a, kind of a budget version of what Tell Me Drake does with all of their telephone call based surveys. So I would probably be doing the majority of this via Survey Monkey. So people would be taking the survey on their phone in five to seven minutes. So when you make it that easy, you tend to get a pretty high response rate. And I've been doing these over and over and over again. And I have a former District 11 administrator who has retired and helps me with surveys. So between the two of us, we have a pretty good handle on how to collect stakeholder feedback.
Can we choose option, do we have to choose both options or like can we choose one and not the other?
No, they stand alone. Those, the, the main proposal and those two options are in menu. You could pick whatever you like. We could do two and not one. If you feel you could facilitate your own process, that would be fine. I'd be delighted to just do the survey for you. So that's entirely up to you.
Can we add one later if we decide we want to do that?
I've been around for 40 years, I'm not going anywhere. So let me know if you wanted to do it and we could, you know, obviously Carl has a process in mind to kind of get you folks to where you need to be. So we would, you know, we would be best served by sticking with that. But again, you know, timing is up to you.
And, and then again, the other critical path is the November election and everything.
Right.
The data that needs to be collected and, and again, once a decision is made, go or no go. At, you know, lock these things in, but there's a few of them that you can start right now. And, and Shannon, I guess you need to determine, you know, at what would be the last point you could start an option of one or an option two without losing, you know, results and data used from that and forward. So anyway, yeah, well, good, well, thanks.
Yeah.
Shannon, thanks so much. You're welcome to hang on. And with that, we'll quickly move into the second component, which is absolutely just valuable and the two together integrate to get the whole picture put together for again, a bond campaign and a best grant for expansion of facilities or improvement of facilities. So without, you know, I'll introduce, turn it over to Jessica. But one, one other side note, Jessica also is the one who provided the, and you all with the Bus Barn example that you're looking for. So they're working on that project. So if that project comes to any more serious nature than a side note, that you talk to Jessica more about, about that on another, another time. So yeah, thanks for that, Jessica. Turn it over to you now.
Thank you, Carl, and thank you guys for having me tonight. Can you all hear me okay?
Yep. We can hear you fine.
All right. Great. So my name is Jessica Blanford. I work for MOA Architecture. We do building, master planning and building design throughout the state of Colorado and up into Wyoming. Most recently, we've been working with the Pueblo 60 School District. We did their master plan and then we are the architects on five of their new buildings and to, including the two best grants that were successful. And then we've done some work up in Colorado Springs as well. If you happen to be up there, check out Chinook Middle School, that's one of ours as well. So we would take over after Shannon is able to provide us some demographic studies. So we start out with data collection and situation analysis. And that's where we're looking at the current buildings, what the current buildings are capable of. We look at, I know that you guys have done some assessments of mechanical systems and things like that with Iconoggy. But we start to look at, we call it identifying opportunities for outstanding learning facilities. So if there are parts of your curriculum or things like that, that the current facilities don't support, we start to look at the capacities of your existing buildings. And we start to determine all of those facility needs that are out there. We take Shannon's information and gather all of that as well. And then we start to look at the goals of the district and the guiding principles from the district. If you do that through, if you get that information through the survey with Shannon, that would be passed on to us. Or you may come to us with those goals as well. And then we work to look at where we see gaps or where we see opportunities in the district. And then we move on to the next portion, which is option development and refinement. So we look at multiple options for how to meet the needs of the district. So it might be building new schools if the demography comes back and says, you know, there's going to be a lot of growth in the district. It might be additions, it might be renovations, all kinds of things to, like I said, support curriculum, to support additional students and needs in the district, things like that. Usually look at four options, five options. So we look at multiple options and not just a single one. And then we bring those options back to discuss with the stakeholder group, whether that's the board itself or a group that you guys have, have brought together. And we try to get feedback on all the different options, as well as presenting some of the pros and cons, costs and things like that. From there, once the district has focused on an option or focused on two options, we might go back and do some further development. Ultimately, we like to get down to a single option to develop into a draft of the master plan. From there, we'll do a draft that of course will come back to the team, to the board and others to review, make sure it aligns with all of the, the goals and things that we have established in the beginning and reviewing through there. And then our final master plan would come out to be approved by the board. And of course, that could be posted to the website in advance of a bond. And then the final master plan, of course, would be formatted in a way that meets the best grant requirements as well. So with that, I'll turn it over if you guys have any questions about the master plan.
Do you have one question for you? So I'm assuming the demographics and the master plan development are serial items. One done before the other, since the master plan relies on demographic data. Am I correct?
Completely, there's going to be overlap.
Okay.
And I mean, I think.
So what I'm trying to get Carl saw, I should have just asked the question.
When do we start?
If we start April 1st, between demographic study and the overlap and the master plan, when would we expect to be done?
So that is also predicated, we had some conversation about Jessica, do you, is there? I mean, the target for all of this is set on the decision and when you need to file for bond. And then when that information needs to start coming in. So Jessica, what was, I don't want to speak for you. What was the timeline? I think your process is, is probably the longer timeframe. And I know there's parts of that that need to be started before the demographic study is completed. And so that's the overlap part. And Jessica, if you can speak to that, then I guess we'll ask Shannon to speak to his timeline.
That's really not that important.
No, we need, we need, we'll match those together to meet the needs. And I guess.
Just curious.
Yeah.
I'm curious.
Right, I think the goal is to have the master plan done this summer, you know, in advance for this, that you could then use that to vote and decide if it's going on the ballot or things like that, right? And so usually that means to be done in July or August to make sure that that's out there. And then that way, you know, your community can read in, weigh in on it and, and things like that. We also like to get things like determining your goals and initiatives or where the facilities, meaning the curriculum are not done before the end of the school year. So that means we need to kind of do that in April and May before we lose everyone in June. And then we can start getting our data collection in terms of your current school capacities, your current facilities and how they're functioning. We can start to do that before we get the demographics from Shannon. So those are the things we like to do while school is still in session, where we can talk to everybody and all the educators before we lose people for the summer. We can see how your facilities are currently operating while we're in school, those kinds of things.
I could just chime in. I agree that by about May 15th, we're going to start losing attention to the summer. And so what I would probably do is try to hit the ground running if you authorized on April 1st and try to have some preliminary work done speculatively. And then maybe about two weeks in, give the architecture team some scenarios based upon the directions. I think we could go in historically, we've grown by about 10 students a year at the elementary level, maybe a little less. But if we're going to grow 10 a year for the next 10 years, you know, what scenario would that suggest? If we're going to grow 25 a year because of some land development impacts, what does that suggest? So I think what I would probably do is have a real quick phase where I say, okay, these are what I think the scenarios are. And then in the meantime, I think Jessica could be working on the existing condition of the buildings, which is going to be a pretty significant issue, I, I think. And then, then her team would have some scenarios that they could start modeling cost off of. And then, you know, the balance of April and early May, I could be working on, you know, all of the kind of basic demographics that we would need for a best grant package. And try to, if we wind up working with the committee, try to get the education component of the demographics done. And, and with the idea that maybe by early May, we would have some architectural concepts and costs ready for people to scratch their heads about. So, you know, I don't know, that would be kind of the quick version of this that we discussed in preliminary terms that I was going to prepare myself to be able to deliver if you folks decide you want to work with me as part of Carl's team.
Awesome, thank you so much. Way longer of an answer than I really needed for my idle curiosity.
It helps me.
Right.
No, no, go ahead.
We are, I mean, we're already in almost April. And to get this on a November ballot, do you feel like we're rushing the process? Or do you feel like you do have adequate time to gather the information that is needed?
So I'll let Jessica.
I guess this would be for both.
We talked to both teams and talked to Superintendent Cooper about that. I think the answer is yes, if we don't delay on starting, it, it meets the timeframes. And Jessica, I think you're the one that's probably the tightest timeline. But I think what you said earlier. Starting now. I mean, you're.
Yeah, we feel like this is a doable schedule. It will extend, you know, past two months, right? So we are going to be working in the summer and asking some groups to meet with us during the summer, which for some school districts is not a problem. For other school districts, it's a heads up we'd like to give you. If you're, if you tend to lose a lot of people for the summer, but as long as. But as long as we can continue to meet with you, you know, into June and that kind of thing, as we finalize options and things like that, I think this is doable.
Awesome. Thank you. So not that I wasn't paying attention, but while you guys were answering me, I went to look up ballot information. So we have to notify the county one hundred days before the election that we're gonna put a question on the ballot. We have to have the language finalized. We have to certify the ballot content sixty days before the election. So September, first September, we have to be able to do that. Sorry, I'm taking notes. So the end of the day, we have until mid-August. To get all this stuff done. Okay, sorry.
No worries. And I think part of the concern is, everybody disappears for the summer. And I think that's the challenge that both our demographic and our, that's our concern about they want to get as much done before that happens. So we can get input and feedback and keep the process.
Give something? All right, any questions, comments, concerns, discussion? I was gonna say, before we move forward to vote.
We have a lot of students, a lot of families that live within our district that take their children to another district. Is that data also gathered? Or, I mean, because it's gonna say this, so many people live in the district. But like, I know, like, in Midway, by the elementary, a lot, a good chunk of people send theirs to out of district and found it. Just because it is a bigger school, more opportunities, their parents live, you know, work in town or whatever. So I mean, is that all?
Do that if you like.
I mean.
Yeah, Shannon.
Because it'll say so many people live in the area.
I would say, what I would say, but I'll let you, you're the expert.
Well, a standard part of my work is what I call import and export of students. So we have students that come to us, especially the children of our staff that want to bring their children to work with them, are coming to Hanover. And then other students are leaving us to go to Pueblo Sixty, Pueblo Seventy, you know, Fountainford Carson, Widefield, you know, wherever. I know I just did an import-export for Harrison Two, and we had Hanover kids in Harrison Two. So that's a standard part of my work, yes ma'am. And I would show you probably five or six years of history because CDE collects this data. So we can tell exactly what our trending has been. Is that getting worse recently? You know, and strategically, the the more scale you have with, you know, more people with certain expertise, as your district grows, you'll start to keep more of those folks. Because I think the pandemic has really taught us that small towns and less urbane environments are healthier places to raise families. And I think that, you know, I think that your market share will probably increase over time for that reason.
Shannon, is it possible to add a question on there that that somehow says, you know, what changes would you like to see in order for your students to stay within the district?
Of course, and that's a standard thing that I typically do. I actually write exit interviews for school districts that are losing kids. And that's one of the things that we ask, what, what, what could we have done to keep your business? And, you know, that's kind of a standard thing that I like, you know, parents to say, you know, were you looking for a unique curriculum? You know, did you, did you leave because you had a STEM opportunity? You know, is arts education important to you? Were you looking for more technology in the building? You know, those kind of things, I think, can really inform what you want to put on a bond election so that you are more likely to keep families at home as opposed to losing them to bigger districts that might have more resources.
I think that information is valuable. Thank you. I'm glad to know that. Thank you.
My only concern is that we need to figure out a way to get that survey to those people.
Well, that's his job.
I know, right? I meant, I meant the royal.
He can do like an import expert thing where he knows which students are where or whatever. So I mean, I don't know.
Send it to every address there is.
Yeah, in the district.
We've done that before.
Oh, I like it. Thank you.
All right, any questions? From the team?
That I can think of right now.
Okay, we, we have a vote coming up a little bit later. If you think of a question between now and then, I'm gonna ask it then. Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
And thank Jessica and Shannon for coming on. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you both for your time this evening.
You're most welcome.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
I, I don't think so, but I honestly don't think it's gonna be that long till we get there. Like, I, I really don't think these first three will take five minutes. All right, that brings us to nine dot one policy reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the policy reviews? Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Swayze. These are no changes to the policies. Just our annual or tri-annual review. Questions? Lots of, they're all E policies, so they're not very exciting. All right, call for the vote, please, sir.
Let's go.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, carries. Policy reviews are approved. That brings us to nine dot two. ACR two, I have a motion to approve ACR two.
Make a motion to approve A R C two. A C R two.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze. All right, um, this, if I remember correctly, is simply selections, is this selection?
It's putting him as the contact.
Right.
And then also just pretty much saying that if something were to happen, a qualified person contracted on behalf of the district to handle it.
Right.
And that was added in two sections.
This is, yeah, this is the thing that really, I don't know, every time we change, it becomes a change this policy or this regulation, policy and exhibit. I don't know why we just keep superintendent. I know, it's the law. All right.
There you go.
Um, just like, same silly reason I vote last every time.
Ask your uncle.
All right, anything else on ACR two? Call for the vote, please, sir.
Let's go.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries, ACR two is approved. That brings us to nine dot three, policy DAC. Do I have a motion to approve DAC?
Make a motion to approve DAC.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Lippert. All this is, is so if you remember last month, we had a bunch of policy reviews. During those reviews, we noticed there was a selection that wasn't made. So we pulled DAC out. We've selected our business manager as the fill-in-the-blank.
Right.
And we did a temporary approval first read on it last month. So questions, comments, concerns, discussion? Hearing none. Call for the vote, please, sir.
Mr. Combs?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, motion carries, DAC is approved. Brings us to nine dot four, master plan. So normally, we, we, in our motions, we have a cover sheet to say what the motion was. This time, we had a cover sheet that says, pick one of the two. So I'll make the motion to move forward with the master plan with all due speed immediately. Do I have a second?
And are we, are you talking both options? Are you talking?
I think that's a TBD. I just want to get the, let's.
So this motion is to proceed forward now and not waiting for the best grant to be awarded.
Right.
Your motion is for us to choose which options we're choosing for the master plan and for the demographic, getting started as soon as possible, so that way we can get this ballot in time for the.
I, my motion is simply to move forward, and I think we'll pick the options in future board meetings, not pick the options tonight.
Oh, we're gonna have to have a special because.
You're, you're short.
We want to get.
Excuse me, I've been short my whole life.
I think we need to do it now.
All right, stand by, stand by. Let me amend my motion, sir.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion to move forward with the master plan, selecting both options presented by Iconergy with all due haste. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mr. Swayze. Now we can talk more. We just need to get the motion on the table. All right, so. Yeah, the only rea- the only rea- the only reason I, I ever had any hesitation with moving forward was budget year. That's been solved. I'm ready to throw it in next year's budget and move forward. And I think, based on the uniqueness of our community, we definitely want the option one part of it to include the community. If you look at the, right down there, work sessions to include the community. I think that option one with the community focus, obviously, we're gonna have to have a couple of option one meetings to do the first part that Shannon talked about.
You're gonna have fun getting the community involved.
And that's, that's why we're paying.
Do it. That's what, that's.
And then I think option two directly speaks to what you're talking about is
Yes.
The survey of getting.
I just don't know if we pay for option one, how much we're going to get out of it. I think the survey is gonna, option two is the best way to address the community. I mean, I feel like these work sessions, we're paying forty-five hundred dollars for us to discuss it with the few select
Right.
Community slash employees. That's my hesitation with option, option one. I mean, yes, it's forty-five hundred dollars, but I mean, that's also forty, forty-five hundred dollars that we could save. We could also add it later on if we're getting a little bit more feedback. I just.
So you think we could do the work of option one?
Correct, because.
Without formally.
Because in the eleven-five, it says to meet with us during a work session and do that. So that's part of the eleven-five. I just, and I mean, we're gonna have our head maintenance and operation, you know, whatever. There, those people will be at that work session.
We can invite the DAC as well.
Correct. And so I just don't know the option one, we're going to get the bang for our buck with that one.
How do you feel about that, sir?
Is it worth it to have a facilitator? That's what you're paying for someone to actually facilitate.
If we can truly go back and choose option one, if that way it looks, choose an option two now, if we do have that option, to add option one.
My, I like, right, my only concern is that in the first couple of sentences of option one, that's the, you know, getting, getting a small group of people together and and going through the facilities, right?
We've done a lot of that.
That's true.
You know what I'm saying? And I mean, and if we can invite those same people, that would have an impact with the facilities to like the work sessions that are included in the eleven-five. I mean, or this is another option. We start with the option two with the surveys and the survey monkeys. If we're getting an outrageous amount of feedback, we can be like, oh, hey, we think that maybe we need to add option one. We can always do a special to add that and then.
Right, or instead of, maybe, instead of, you know, if we're getting a lot of interest, right, we can scale back the option two and add elements of option one. I mean, at the, at the end of the day, right, these are scalable. Right? Right?
Yeah. I mean, I definitely think we need option two for sure. And we definitely need the eleven-five because I feel like this demographic information. Well, it's just, it's definitely needed for any future growth or even non-growth in the district. We need to know where we're at, where we're headed.
So you want a next option one? How do you feel, Ed?
I'm gonna get everybody together to discuss this stuff.
Because it's included in a work session up here.
That's fine. We'll all.
We do it as an invite to the community, you know, I mean.
We gotta advertise the living snot out of it.
Yeah.
We gotta, we gotta get our sign fixed, Chuck, and then put it on the sign.
I don't feel.
I know.
Okay. No, what are you saying?
Right.
You guys have been here long enough. And I've been here plenty long. This community does not get involved. They don't care. The only ones to do, those have been here for a long time, the days, the ones that have been here a long time.
Parks Board to weigh in on this and come in as well as our former board members.
But at the same time.
A park board is fine, but we need to get that side over there, over here.
I agree.
We have to have these meetings at Prairie Heights.
Maybe we have.
These people over here will travel. Most of them over here don't care. We've got to get it together and get the people over there to come out of their houses and meet.
Option one is necessary?
Well, if we put it on him to do it, I think it's probably so.
But.
But you guys are willing to do the work and get the DAC to throw out the survey out there and tell them, hey, we're having a spaghetti dinner, everybody, all adults come and we're gonna do a work session. We got to.
That would be nice. And then have a movie going for the kids or something, you know?
Everybody makes spaghetti, just watery and running. Make some good meal.
We could do chicken alfredo.
Laurie's soup, that's awesome. But you gotta get them out over there to meetings.
The way I'm reading.
We're not gonna have a good.
The way I'm reading is it says it's gonna have, pretty much, we're gonna select a committee. So I don't know if he's taking it all on himself or if he, we're just gonna have a committee, which I mean, at that point, we could be the committee.
I, I think we're all going to have to pitch in to get people to turn it on.
For sure.
What's, what's nice and and from, from a community standpoint, it would be nice to have an impartial person who's not just facilitating this and saying, okay, well, let's listen to what this group says. Let's listen to what they say.
Like a moderator.
None of us are actually the ones saying,
Right.
Listen, 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 we actually have an impartial, that's the only reason I think it might be beneficial there. I, I mean, I understand we could probably do it ourselves, but it might actually benefit the conversation.
And if I could, I, I, I just, again, this is, you're decided or muddling your decision.
No, no, please.
But I think the other component that Western demographics brings is a terrific and a tremendous amount of examples and experience from other school districts. And and sometimes that is very persuasive. Just letting people know, you know, what's happened in different places, what the outcome's been and situations. Situational examples tend to be something that can have communities understand the issues and understand why it might be better to do one thing or another. And having him around to answer questions at those community meetings and use those examples, I think would be powerful. Again, that's just.
If they were to have one of those meetings, let's say they had a breakfast. And people walk to get their meal, and then they start talking about this stuff, and he's there. He could go around answering the questions, tell them what's going on, why we're doing it. That's what he does, right?
That's by facilitating the meetings, you would have his access there. And then I guess part of, you know, deciding if he's gonna be here or, you know, part of a virtual meeting, I mean, which might facilitate better with your community. Having virtual meetings, we talked about that.
Nah, here.
Not our community.
Here, here.
Got it.
Yeah.
So those, but Shannon, if you're still on, I, maybe you could respond to some of these from your past experience and.
Well, well, I am still monitoring and I'm delighted to help with processing your decision. You know, I, I tend to do whatever you need within reason, given the number of hours we have for the activity. But, you know, I think that, you know, Hanover is going to be more of an in-person process for community members. I think it's going to take something other than just a master plan discussion to hold people's interest. I think that any kind of community involvement that you have is going to increase people's probability to vote yes for something because they have some skin in the game, so to speak. And, but, you know, on the other hand, the majority of the intent of that, number one, is to help you process a decision and help you make a decision. So, you know, tonight, I could propose to you that we do half of option one and that you folks run your process with your community. I try to give you materials that are, that are, you know, small on a card that you could, you know, use to talk with people during the school event, that we have our, you know, cell phone survey that's very easy for people to do. And you use events to get people to participate in the survey. And then after we have developed all of the information demographically, the scenarios and the architectural data on building condition and what, you know, adding space and eliminating portables would cost you, then I come in for two meetings right at the end and help you facilitate a process. And, you know, I'm pretty good at helping people that don't necessarily all have the same point of view to come to a decision that they can all support, whether it's, you know, a room full of PhDs discussing, you know, closing a dozen. Whether it's, you know, a room full of PhDs discussing, you know, closing a dozen schools, or it's a more broad-based community trying to decide whether or not portable classrooms should be part of their long-term strategy or not. I can kind of help you do some confidential straw polling, help you get to the point, okay, now we're at the point where we agree to A and B, but we don't know where we stand on C and D. What do we do on that, and I guess what I was trying to do by proposing that little consensus process is to try to get you to the point where you'll be able to declare to El Paso County that you're going to have an election and start working on your ballot with enough time for you to process that as a board. And the, those deadlines are gonna creep up on you, and most of the districts I work with don't have board meetings during July. So, I proposed that option one idea there to try to help you folks get to a decision among yourselves in a timely fashion um without dragging into July and um, you know, having this issue be something that you're rushed through the first couple of weeks of August. So, uh, you know, and I, and you know, most counties are wanting a decision by August twenty-third, and I think El Paso County might actually be sooner than that, you may have to certify a ballot in late July if that hundred-day lead that your superintendent mentioned is what the their, their declar- the, the county clerk's deadline is. You know, do the math, that's September, that's August, September, and October right there. And uh, so, you know, that may mean the last week of July is your deadline to inform the county that you wanna go on the ballot, so, you know, that's the only reason why I proposed that option one, and I've been able to do that before and get people to be, to some sort of a consensus on a high-stakes issue like this. But if you kind of are unified as a board and you think you can handle the community interface piece of this with a little bit of help from me, maybe you cut that option one in half and have me come in right at the end and facilitate two meetings among yourselves to get to um, a ballot definition in a timely fashion so that you can make a decision as a board with a little bit of help, if you think you can make that decision on your own, then you probably don't need option one at all, so um, you know, I'll just leave that to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So, um, alright.
I'll tell you, I'll amend my decision. I, I kinda feel, he brought up some good points here, we're, we're under a time pressure. This is a lot going on, and the more we try to dip our hands into it, try to mess up the program, we gotta do option one and two in my opinion, uh, and let the professionals, the forty-year experience, handle the job with our assistance.
Right.
I mean, it's gotta be a team effort, we, we're up against a clock. And we're not talking, yeah, it's a lot of money to you and me, but when you talk about the total uh project scope.
That's, it's lost in round here.
Yeah, yeah, we might be shooting ourselves in the foot if we try to dabble in that.
Anyone else? Thoughts? Um, it's concerns discussion.
Already gave you the word.
Um. I just, I just have a question, um, on the master plan, it says reimbursed, reimbursable not to exceed five thousand dollars. So is that five thousand that we're gonna pay and then get back, or?
That's incurred, and Jessica's still on my, my understanding that she shared the amount, the maximum amount, her travel and.
Okay, that we would reimburse them. Okay, I got. Okay, I got. Perfect. Okay. I'll have what I need.
Everybody good? Questions, any for the questions?
No, thank you for everyone, for the research, thank you for your time, thank you for the presentations.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks for answering our questions.
You're welcome.
Vote please, sir.
So.
Vote.
Before we vote, this is for both the whole submit.
Option one.
So demographics, option one, option two, and the master plan.
Yep.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
Yep, that's the motion on tip. Call for the vote, please, sir.
Ms. Combs.
I.
Mr. Lippert is nine. Mr. Swavey.
Bye, motion carries. Mr. Superintendent. Um, scan your field of fire, sir.
Soon as I.
I don't know, I see it any other way.
Rock and roll. You don't need to wait for the first.
Yeah, that first was a hypothetical, Shannon, that was just a hypothetical, I'm just trying to get an idea. And Jessica. Alright, thank you both.
Forward to working with.
Yes, as of right now, thanks, man.
I'll get started.
Thank you.
Tonight, good, good.
Just don't text and drive.
Unless it's talk to text.
Drive safe.
Yes, drive safe.
I know, Lori did a good job.
Married her for her craftsmanship, right?
That's the only reason.
She could probably build you a house, huh? It, yeah.
I'll build, I'll let her build you a house.
She, she probably does all your animals' houses, huh?
Alright, that brings us to nine dot five, education workforce program grant assurances, do have a motion to approve nine dot five.
Make a motion to approve nine, not nine, nine dot five.
Thank you, Mrs. Combs, have a second. Thank you, Mr. Lippert, so this is the standard, we're giving the superintendent permission to apply for a grant that he may or may not get, may or may not use.
But it will supplement, not supplant funds.
Well, that's a nice grant.
Did we already talk about this one?
No, alright, this.
Is email.
Yeah.
Tonight.
This, well, so, yeah, why don't I go over it anyway?
Well, hold on real quick, so, do you guys get the weekly CASB update emails?
I used to, but I don't anymore, I don't know why.
Okay, we gotta look into that, it was in two weeks ago CASB update. Um, the fact that this grant existed and what it was and how it worked and.
For retention, right?
Uh, yeah, recruitment, retention, and um for, for our employees.
Um, go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
That's, that's basically all I wanted to say, is it's, it's a, it's a grant using the S R money that went to C D E that they've gotta spend, and they wanna spend it now, and they're kicking it, this is a grant that they're using to actually fund some of it on recruitment the retention of our workforce.
So these can help with like, um, if we get it, uh, like the steps and stuff like that, like we can use.
Remember, this is non-recurring.
Yeah, this is not recurring, so.
Okay, okay, I just.
You're, you're thinking along the right.
Say a two thousand dollar holiday bonus.
Okay, or like the signing bonus, or, okay.
Well.
Randy's trying to get some of bonus over there.
I figured I'd spend the whole, thou- hundred thousand dollars in one shot.
No, couldn't.
We can't do that, Dan. Can't do that. It cuts down the paperwork.
So, once again, this is, this is the only commitment that we're making here is that if we get the grant that we will follow the standard grant rules, which is just spend the money on whatever we wrote the grant for. And we'll account for it separately and fill out all their forms and all that fun stuff.
So another headache for Pat.
Well, G S N's gonna actually follow a lot of this, uh, as a part of their they're gonna make sure.
Well, thank you for bringing it to us.
Anything we can do for our employees and 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 to help them out is, is important.
Hey, anything else? Call for the vote, please, sir.
I.
Hi. Hi, motion carries. Grant assurances are approved. Uh, that brings us to ten dot O, information updates, as always, thank you, everyone, for your amazing detail. You know, thought last month when I read the preschool update that I would know by this month what pet, pet they've chosen. She's still leaving us hanging, not cold Jody. Not cool.
I'm sure she's on, tell her.
No, she's not on.
Oh, she's not?
Um, alright, anything else?
I like that the junior class has done a snack cart to raise money for the prom. Um. Back in my day, we had vending machines, and that's how a portion of the vending machines went to the senior class or the junior, whoever was elected that year, um, and it helped with the senior trip, and it helped, and it was a a drink machine, and it was a snack machine, and always wondered what happened to the vending machines, I don't know. Um, so I like that they brought a snack cart, because I can send my kid a couple dollars sometimes when I'm low on groceries. Where is it at?
We just gotta load it and get it, load it with some stuff.
During, yeah. During, sir.
That might have been Michelle Obama.
It was Michelle Obama that did that, and that's when they all disappeared, have Randy done that?
I wasn't gonna call out names.
I mean, I don't wanna get political, however, if there's a way we could possibly do it for like before school or after school, and it could help benefit one of the classes, that would be wonderful, I like that they have the, the snack cart.
Yeah, and just to add to it, uh, Chuck went through that C D inspection and did awesome in that report, uh, great job on that thing.
Alright, um, anything else on the updates?
I think it's awesome that the PhD got the jackets for the students that did not have any. Um, that is awesome, I think that you guys are doing wonderful things over there with the elementary, um, with the bikes, the jackets, the shoes, uh, the pajama drive that y'all did, um. You guys at P G, P H D definitely put the elementary first, and that's very appreciative, because a jacket can mean the world to a kid when they're old, so that is amazing, and the Underwood family, thank you, I'm gonna. It doesn't matter, they also had pitched in, so just, once again, that's showing that our community's coming together, not as a board, but strictly as community members, taking care of each other. Um, I like seeing that, it warms my heart, so thank you.
I can't have my heart warmed, because it's too small, um. It'll explode. Alright, anything else on the updates? Alright, I'll make a motion to move into executive session to discuss personnel matters, and give this superintendent feedback on his performance in accordance with C R S twenty-four six four oh two four F, do I have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Combs, call for the vote, please, sir.
Strong.
I.
Mr. Lippert, I, Mr. Swavey.
Hi. Fine, motion carries, we are uh moving into executive session at seven fifty-one P M.
Thank you for saying that back there.
Look at me like, yeah, freeze, white, freeze.
If it's made of gold, it's a good investment because.
Yeah.
It's going up, right? All right, we reconvene at 9:27 PM. And attendance are President Randy Underwood.
Vice President Neil Fong.
Work Secretary T.J. Lippert.
Director S.W.D.
Superintendent Kyle Cooper.
So that brings us to other business. Do we have any other business?
Everyone be safe.
That brings us to adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Ms. Combs, have a second.
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Lippert. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.